Shall I do? The Springboro Board of Education meeting Thursday, June 4th, 2015. Roll call.
Regano.
Here.
Petroni, Malone.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Stuckey.
Here.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. Your motion.
Stand move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Regano.
Yes.
Malone.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 1.3, approval of the May 28, 2015 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Stand move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Regano.
Before we go, or, um, budget, I didn't have a chance to check if the correction that I had suggested was made.
Yes, I did. I did make the correction.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Regano.
Yes.
Malone.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 1.4, approval of the May 26, special meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Stand move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Regano.
Yes.
Malone.
Yes.
Anderson.
abstain.
Uh, Stuckey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 2.1, is there a report from the Springboro Education Association? Not seeing any. We'll move on to 2.2, Springboro Classified Employees Report. And, uh, item 2.3, public participation. I don't believe anybody has asked to speak. So we'll move on to 3.1, approval of the contract between Springboro Community City Schools and Springboro Education Association. Is there a motion?
Stand move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Roll call. Mr. Anderson, uh, Mr. Petroni had sent in a statement, or are you going to read that for him? Or would you like me to?
If you've got it on your iPad, you can actually read it.
Okay, um, yeah, Mr. Petroni had asked that this statement be, uh, read and inserted into the meeting minutes. Um, and his statement is as follows, "In January, when the two, 2015 board meeting schedule was set, I reminded the administration board that I travel frequently, and if meeting dates change, I will most likely not be able to attend the rescheduled meetings. To date, meetings in March, April, May, June, and July have been rescheduled, forcing me to miss most of those rescheduled meetings. My lack of attendance is not intentional and does not represent any disinterest on my behalf. It is unfortunate that the June 9th meeting has now been rescheduled to June 4th tonight, and I have been advised that during this meeting, the board will approve a proposed new three-year contract for our staff. I have repeatedly stated that we simply cannot afford the contract as written. I would appreciate in the, I would like to participate in this vote for the new contract. Unfortunately, again, the meeting was officially rescheduled on May 29th. This simply does not give me time to reschedule my work schedule to be present on June 4th. I am hopeful many can understand committing to a schedule and not being able to reschedule on whimsically short notice. For those of us with families and demanding work schedules, I am frustrated that the new majority is not willing to allow debate on the topic by the full board. The random rescheduling of meetings appears to be strategic and political, which eliminates the voice of the community in total. My apologies again for my absence." That's the end of Mr. Petroni's statement.
Mr. President, is there any way I can comment to that? Well, I don't know that, I don't know that we could probably rebuttal back and forth, but, um, in fairness, he's not here, so we just let that stand and, um, the only thing I would comment, and looking back over the past few, several years, I noticed that a lot of board meetings were changed, so, okay, so, and that's not here or there, it's just, they were all for, for good reason, and I'm, I'm as sorry as anybody that Mr. Petroni's not here, that we'd all like him to be here, but, um...
I, I would just add, Mr. Anderson, that, I mean, I, I can understand why Mr. Petroni might feel that he's, uh, being intentionally excluded. I mean, since March, we have only had one meeting. From, from the period, from March to June, we've only had one meeting that has stuck to the regular schedule, and that is May 28th, and he had a pre-planned vacation that day. So, I mean, I can understand why he might feel that way. And so, uh, you know, I also think that there's a problem with rescheduling regular meetings. When that schedule's published, I think anything that's not on that regular meeting schedule is legally a special meeting. And so you might, we might need to look into that, too, but, um, anyway. I also have, uh, some comments on the, um, contract. But I would like to take that, a five-minute recess or so, so that I can look at the information Ms. Floyd just handed us, and verify my assumptions before I make those comments. Can, can we take that five minutes now?
Sure. In deference to that, we'll take, we'll take, um, it's five after, so 10 minutes after, then we'll recommit.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Yeah. Um, I, pred, operate by a couple of guiding principles. Be factual and transparent, don't hide information from the public, or the employees, or even board members. Keep a balanced budget, and don't spend money that taxpayers haven't authorized. Um, the press release that we sent out a couple of days ago about these contracts, uh, was not factual and transparent. In fact, I think it was misleading. It stated that the salary increases on this three-year agreement are 2%, 2%, and 3%. However, most certified employees' actual salary increases will be closer to 6%, 6%, and 7%.
Not true.
Well, I just asked the administration, we're going to be transparent, are we going to go back to forthlike with Mr. Anderson, because...
Just, just, just finish your comments.
On repeated occasions, we get into this, okay? And, uh, Mr. Petrie has really in fact been a bully. He throws up all kinds of demon, he, he tries to demonize people when they don't agree with him.
I'm sorry, I would ask that we...
Here we go again.
Yeah, here we go again. When you refer to people as demonizing someone else and being a bully, that's out of line. I am sorry.
I'm just telling you what's happened on a...
There is supposed to be a level of professionalism here.
It's happened on a repeated basis. He demonizes people and say that they don't...
Please state your interest in the contract.
That they don't, that they don't agree with him, that they don't like teachers, that they don't like students.
If you were making...
I mean, it's a bunch of, it's a bunch of horse hockey.
You started out...
And I got interrupted in about the middle of the first sentence.
Well, when you throw out accusations and innuendos at people, how do you think they're going to respond? Just stick to the facts.
They can respond in turn, Mr. Anderson. We're supposed to have some decorum here.
Well, then, just, just...
Not arguments.
Just...
If they don't agree, they can respond to when it's their turn to respond.
All right.
You have no right, you have no right to dominate the floor.
No right at all.
None.
Go read your Robert's Rules book, Ms. Dr. Malone. We take turns on having the floor.
Go ahead with your discussion.
We can solve that issue. I would just ask that the administration publish the actual before and after salaries of every employee and put it on the district website. And, and then we'll know. We won't have to argue about statistics. Um, the fact is, our budget is busted. And despite having a million more revenue, a million more dollars in revenue each year, spending has increased by $3 million per year under this board. These contracts will add about another $1 million, excuse me, another $1 million per year to that spending. So our once comfortable $11 million cash balance is gone in just a couple more years. Now, voting for this contract is like deliberately bouncing a check and misleading people into believing that we can fulfill the contract terms. And Mr. Petroni and I have repeatedly warned about this board's spending problems. We've taken too little action too late, and now we have employee contracts that we can't pay for. In spite of all the promises we've heard over the last year about no new levies, the plan now is to ask for taxpayers to bail us out either next year or the year after. I got conflicting information from our administration, but, um, in, in short order nonetheless. Be happy to address questions or comments of people.
No, I just, we're not, you stated what you wanted to state, now, anybody else has...
I'm just reminding you, I'm entitled to a, another round to rebut whatever might be said. Thank you.
This is not a debate. It's an opportunity to share your opinions and ask questions. It is not a debate. Yes, I would like the opportunity to state my, my feelings on this. First of all, first and foremost, I, I believe that, uh, that when the board is negotiating with its employees, that the key factor here is to be fair. We have to be fair with the community, but we also have to be fair with our employees, and we also have to be fair for our students. It cannot be out of balance. You cannot sacrifice one for the other. We continually hear tossed around the term, "We are protecting the taxpayers." Our Board of Education role, first and foremost, in my opinion, is being advocates for the students of Springboro. There is a difference. I'm not saying that you, that we abandon our taxpayers. We certainly have to keep them at, at, in the forefront. But, meeting after meeting, the term which is always used is, "Well, I'm here protecting the taxpayer." Our job as a Board of Education member is to be advocates for our kids. We have gone down this road many times. We have historically said, the last two years, from before the board elections occurred, the problem with the five-year forecast and all the financial planning that went into that was that there was no provision for staff raises, no provision for any increased medical costs. That is irresponsible. That is not balanced, that is not trying to take care of everyone. It's trying to protect a portion of our community, and that is not our role. I wish that, frankly, we were in a stronger financial position. I wish we had a five-year forecast that, right now, had a approved state budget, but we don't. And who knows when we're going to have one. I wish we didn't have to deal with the, the pipeline issue. But anyone who's around school finance knows that it, there is never a time when there's not uncertainty. This budget, and, excuse me, this con, these contracts are fair, they're balanced, and our employees deserve our support when it comes time to approving them and implementing them. Thank you.
Mr. Stuckey, you have anything?
Uh, moment.
Okay, all right. So with that, we'll, we'll head and vote on the motion.
I have a follow-up comment, uh, Mr. Anderson. Um, you know, we're charged with managing the budget. I, and, uh, managing the budget requires some modicum of controlling your spending. Managing the budget requires negotiation, not capitulation. And all you have to do is look at the five-year forecast that we were handed last week to see how much the spending has gone up since fiscal '14. So I, I just put the numbers out in front of folks. The revenue's going up. The expenses are going up much faster. So managing the budget requires negotiation and not capitulation. Thank you.
Mr. President.
So why don't we, I, I would like for you all to...
I'd like to present from beginning to end, from 2013 up to today, so that the community can see our version of these numbers and their black and white.
I think we do owe the community, that there's obviously a difference of opinion, so I think we do owe it to them.
Well, I guess I would ask for equal time to rebut these numbers and explain them. Uh, we have two folks who weren't here in 2013, and, and, and so, well, it'd take a long time to explain all those things, so...
I know we...
If you want to spend the time, I would, I would ask for equal time to discuss those numbers.
We're gonna, the administration has a right to present what they put together. As every board member, we should be in agreement with that.
Did I suggest we schedule that for another meeting?
Oh, we're gonna hear it right now.
Okay. Okay.
Right.
Yours popped up, seems mine, uh, mine never works.
John has the flash drives. I'm going to use the flash drive.
No, I just need mine.
Okay, board members in front of you, you have a packet here tonight, and what I'd like to do is just kind of give you where we've been and where we're at now, uh, to start, just some opening points. We examine, and this is based on multiple emails, texts, that we're irresponsible in spending and, uh, deceiving taxpayers to some extent. And that's absolutely not what we're about. And I think once it's shown here that no matter if budget finance would have maintained a board committee, which Mr. Regano, Mr. Petroni oversaw, compared to now that Mrs. Floyd and I are addressing it, you will see that we were slated faster to get to a levy in 2018 if the actual plans that were in place, that I liked, that I embraced, would have been carried out. The districts actually rolled back money and reutilized that money to not have to go on the ballots. I would like to go through tonight, and Mr. Regano, if you'd like to rebut, maybe at the next meeting, on exactly what we're going to address, because we're not going into everything, just the specific plans, because the speaking...
I would like to rebut those tonight, Mr. Petrie.
Very good.
Since you're presenting tonight, we'll just do it tonight.
The specific plans that continue to be discussed were developed. So if we begin, if we take a look at, uh, the things we're going to look at are teacher steps and our staff steps, which are legally required. Those steps are the teachers to give back, they're not ours to take. Second, banned athletics was defunded. Staff plan had no staff beyond 2013. Insurance was, there was nothing discussed with any insurance increases. We're going to discuss textbooks, we're going to discuss unmet needs. In summary, you're going to see unmet needs exceeding $2 million, all the way back to 2012, 2013, revised assumption altering promised plans, no support for staff salaries or benefits even when required, defunded banned athletics, and no additional staff beyond 2013. In conclusion, if the above items would have been accurately forecast, we would have clearly seen the need for a levy in 2018 even then. In addition, reducing millage would not have been an option. District staff has developed numerous cost savings plans, which have resulted in our ability to accelerate student achievement, support high-quality staff while maintaining a balanced budget, which delayed the need for new levy money. If millage would not have been reduced based on the facts we have today that we will show tonight, we would have been able to fiscally, be fiscally sustainable through 2020. And that was the goal when we came on. If you could go to the next slide, Mr. Pennell. There were, throughout various, there were multiple things sent out about the district that compared the past to the future. I've been very vocal that I've certainly never wanted to go back to the past. Springboro struggled. This is an outstanding school district that should not be struggling. But what I want to point out today is, number one, I'm not here to disagree. Everything on this page was good. Reduced school fees, great, they're staying the same. You're going to see that tonight. Some of them went down. Lower pay-to-participate fees, they're staying the same, we're not raising those. Busing restored, awesome. Staff cuts reversed, long neglected building and grounds and maintenance funding. We've been able to add all of those things. When you pull in today, things looked very nice. Agreed with all of it. Efficiency plan, my staff and I created that efficiency plan. It did add more gifted, more reading intervention, and within that plan was a preschool plan that here said saved 132,000, and ended up saving 400. And they didn't know that when this was created. Uh, also, we've added classes at the high school, uh, all of these things, and all of those things take money. And lastly, our technology plan, um, the wireless, wireless internet access, laptops for every teacher, 1,100 new computers, all of those things did take place. I supported all of those 100%. If you could go to the next. At one of the first budget and finance meetings I ever attended, the president of this was Mr. Petroni, and I, he had a lot of things that made me excited to hear about. In the first paragraph, he talks about this was a board-driven budget and finance committee with two board members. The district people were consultants. If we skip down to talks about tonight, the committee is pleased to present a five-year forecast that offers respect indifference to the taxpayer, is transparent to everyone, and is child-centric. Anyone in education would love to see a budget. Those of us that's worked in education, like myself, for over 20 years, it's been a struggle to really do what's right for kids. So to be able to come in and put a technology plan in place, textbook plan in place, it was fun, it was exciting. The part about this was, there was nothing there for staff, and they're the most integral part of the equation. In addition, um, there's multiple positive comments in here, and I'm not going to go back to that, but the groundwork from that first year, from the very first days, were very positive. So now if we go on to the first assumptions. Tara and I are going to compare the assumptions from budget and finance of 2013, of when it was a board-driven assumptions, and I will give my opinion on what we saw out of this by facts. Board members, and you can skim through, the first page is page six that we'll be looking at. And we need to talk a little bit about what these things meant for the bottom line. First of all, under Personnel Services 3.01, it states there's no provision for any negotiated increases or experience steps throughout the forecasted period. Well, law's crystal clear, those steps are not something we just take from teachers, they're theirs. Now, there might be some discussion about, well, maybe they don't have to be that high, but they were negotiated in good faith and should have been respected. They were not in our budget. When you look at something that costs that much money and it's not in the budget, sure, you're going to show $11 million surplus, but it was not in the budget. Next, all banned and athletic extracurricular salaries will be moved to the 300 fund resulting in a decrease of salary costs to the general fund. What that means, the 300 fund is not supported by the district. That in itself is $500,000, right there. If that was not supported, all of our band kids, all of our athletics, go away. The understanding was, the boosters and the coaches would work together to fundraise to pay for our athletic and band program. Now later on, it's shown that, and I think, I'm probably moving on faster than you, that ban somehow ended up staying in there and saw no reduction. Athletics, on the other hand, is transferred out of the general fund into the 300 fund with the understanding in these documents that transfer would be given back. So all the while, that $500,000 stays in that bottom line. The only way that was going to stay on our bottom line is for us to reduce any money to athletics, which means in Springboro, we cut athletics. Lastly, the board-approved staffing plan, uh, is included in 2013. Beyond 2013, there were no staff included. For the simple fact, when you think our high school, we already knew was going to have the highest numbers, the most kids we've ever seen in the district, there's no staff in here for special ed, there's no staff in here for educational aids. So again, that bottom line, very rich. When you look over into October...
Right, that was the May, that was the May 2013 forecast. This right here is the board-approved October 2013 forecast. So you can see definitely that there are some differences here. The first one being where we discussed the, that there was nothing in there for raises for staff. Well, in July of 2013, they settled with the certified staff and gave a 2% increase in steps, much like we're asking for tonight, with the exception of the third year was three. So they approved in July of 2013, and they've had the increases in there for 14 and 15. So now, the forecast in October shows a large expense for the two years, but then again, nothing else for 16 and 17. So, and then 18 has actually came on at this point, and you'll notice, um, in a little bit, too, that there was nothing at all for anything, figured in 18 for anything. So right there, there's a, a cost that will be, you will show the bottom line of the five year being reduced because the salaries were approved, whereas in October, there was nothing in there for the salaries, and now in October, there was, but only for that intermittent contract, nothing else for anything further beyond that. So then obviously now where we're at now, where we're here again, and nothing was planned for. Um, then as well, you can see that, let's see, we, you talked about the banned athletics that is also in here still as well in October, all banned athletics, um, are going to be out of the general fund. Well, if you look at our forecast now, we've had to transfer 355,000 just to meet our contractual obligations that we have made with all of the coaches and supplementals of people who are our coaches. So, right there, that's 255,000 more than was in these notes, which is 1.5 million over the forecast period. So that's a huge cost as well that wasn't planned for, that we ended up having to, to do, unless we're going to have, I don't know, 600, 800 dollar pay-to-participate fees. If, I guess, they fundraised a, a huge amount, but it's still, it's a large expense to expect for them to pay altogether. So, um, there was also that, and then also the staffing plan in here also states in the October forecast, nothing else was figured in past 2013. And we had, and there's some, in the forecast, or in the notes as well, later on, it discusses how we know that there's a large increase in enrollment that's going to be going into the high school, and that they would be looking at, you know, some things that were going to be needed there for the library and some other things. So they knew students, that the enrollment was going to grow, which would usually mean having to hire additional staff, but there was absolutely nothing in the forecast as well for that. So those are the three things you've hit on so far.
Next, if we look at salary or benefits, health insurance. In our contract, and in the contract then, it was agreed upon that if insurance increased 10% or above, then the board would have the option to select a different, uh, health plan. So with that, one would consider perhaps figuring in 10% across the board for an increase. There was nothing figured in. When you look at a 10% increase to our health insurance, it's 5.9 million dollars a year...
Um, it's 4 point, our, our health insurance is 4.45 right now.
So that's a significant amount of money. So in any business, if salaries didn't increase and health insurance never increased, that bottom line's always going to look very rich. That's a given. So when that changed, after we negotiated, it went up 9% and 6.5%, correct?
Yes. Well, I think we had 6.5% that was in the forecast, and it actually went up 9.5%. So, that the difference between the May forecast, expecting that one, those years, 14 and 15, it says it expected to go up 6.5%. What ended up happening is it was 9.5%, but even then, there was nothing future placed in there, even though we got a lot larger of an increase in that one year alone, there was still not one cent for anything future for health insurance increases, although, according to our negotiated agreement, we agreed to pay up to 10% before we went back. So...
In addition, our teachers at that time took a concession to have 80/20 insurance. I supported finding parity with the community, which was one of the goals of the former board. Most districts are 90/10 to 85/15 insurance. This year in the contract that the board has in front of them, they've not only, they've reduced that again to now have an HSA, which means their out-of-pocket expense for a family is 2,000, and for a single is 1,000, which saves the board another $1,004,000. So that concession alone almost paid for the increases of the teachers. All right. Textbooks adoption. Again, I know... Again, I know, when I came on a superintendent, I'd had the luxury of hiring, hiring everyone in central office. We'd all been principals, loved instruction. In this forecast, it included six hundred thousand dollars a year for textbooks, or two point four million over four years. Now, the, the thing to remember is, beyond two thousand sixteen, there was nothing budgeted. So it was budgeted up to the point to where the bottom line still looked good.
Okay. So if you look at the actual verbiage that's in the notes, it says for textbook adoptions. That's what was in the forecast for May, and then we come over to the October forecast, and now it says textbook purchases, educational software, and necessary technology equipment for the students, and it's the same dollar figure. So now we went from textbooks to now we have to try to figure out how to buy the textbooks and everything else that's needed and still stay within that number. But I don't think that was ever really communicated because as the plan started to be rolling out, it costs a lot more than the six hundred thousand for the textbook adoptions.
Well, the hard part was we had already signed the contract to spend over a million dollars.
And they were the electronic.
From six hundred thousand to here, to adding all these things in, and then long term, FY seventeen only two hundred thousand dollars and nothing for eighteen. That's where, if this would have continued out, which was a phenomenal plan, six hundred thousand, which is still not what a lot of districts spend, not even close. We would have been showing levy if we would have continued that out. All my saying, saying is here is, these plans that were put into place, very good, but if those plans would have been carried out, even if nothing would have changed with any board, it's no new direction, we would have needed a levy regardless, even if we didn't pay staff.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the textbooks were electronical textbooks, so it wasn't even that we needed the backend to be able to support. So now we're, we have all this electronic textbooks and we don't have the infrastructure to support all of the stuff that we just purchased. So that needed to be purchased regardless, which is what we did come back last year and explain that there were extra costs involved for actual backend, which actually in the notes that we'll see in a little bit, it actually did talk about backend technology was not figured in, and it was an unmet need all the way back to May of two thousand thirteen.
Okay, if you wanna move on to page eleven, down at the very bottom. This is where it talks about, when I use the word defund it, which is a very aggressive term. There it is. Further discussion is needed between the athletic department and all athletic booster groups to determine how size and scope of all athletic programs, inclusive of how they will be funded starting in FY fourteen. So beginning in FY fourteen, there was gonna be no money out of general fund going into athletics. The thought behind that was that funding would be developed between the boosters and the athletic department. Please understand, we have a one point one million dollar athletic department. As of today, the board gives three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars to that. So basically, seventy percent of our athletic department is funded by our athletic boosters, our coaches with the fundraising. But the point we're missing here is it's our kids out there doing the fundraising. So again, that three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, and you see the other things that haven't been added in. Again, that bottom line keeps bulging when those numbers aren't in there.
And again, when I first arrived here in, for the May of two thousand fourteen, shortly after I arrived, I had to actually go back to the board because we were getting ready to pay out the next round of coaching contracts and the, and the athletics did not have enough money in their cash balance with the original portion that was put in, which is why I had to come back to the board and request an additional amount of money just to meet our contractual obligations. So that's kind of when we kind of started to really look at, wow, this is gonna cost a lot more than, than this money that was set aside for them. Which I'm not sure if they did any research to come up with the actual number that they were gonna transfer over there, but it was clearly not enough.
So in short, when we talk about, and we haven't got to the unmet needs yet, which is on page twelve. The reason spending has increased is because what was originally developed, and that's why I wanted to show, it was a great plan in the beginning. We funded it, but this did, that's why our spending has increased. There is nothing, and these numbers were agreed upon, but the bottom line is they weren't carried out in that bottom line. We carried them out, which is the reason we're over on spending. So if we look at the unmet needs on page twelve. It talks about the district will annually monitor technology, the budget to actual should be brought to budget and finance committee, the committee would like to evaluate an evening tech support plan between now and October. We never even went into that because it would have been highly expensive. A detailed maintenance capital need plan has been created. The district has not allocated money to the, address the ongoing cost of replacement carpet, paint, refinishing floors, tile. All of that was an unmet need, HVAC, all those things. We have to paint the walls where the kids are at. If you take a walk around our building today, you'll see, we have a thousand five kids in this building and two thousand at our high school. We're gonna have to paint, we're gonna have to put some carpet in. Those were things that were unmet needs. The administration will provide quarterly updates to budget and finance committee regarding expenditures against the plan. And any updates may necessary regarding capital items and unmet capital needs budget is two million dollars. So when Mr. Pennell came on with over twenty years of experience, he started developing plans. One of the things we did do was an energy project, which really diverted a lot of these things so that it didn't hit the bottom line. Also down at the bottom, and I'm not gonna read all of that to you, but within this, they're talking about how we were using the e-textbooks and we would need the wireless internet capacity just to take some of the assessments, but also the backend information, it had not been assessed at this time. Mr. Pennell, once we brought forward edge and was able to not only save us money, but assess our backend, which ended up being what, half a million? So about a half a million dollars. So again, we can't just buy the computers or say that we have them in the district and then not have the infrastructure to power those products. We were able to do that.
Start talking about, we can, so what I'll, what we'll briefly hit on next is May, May of two thousand fourteen. So this is the next forecast after the October one that we were talking about on this side. This was the first five year forecast that I was involved in when I, when I got here. And after sitting with all the administration and going through the budget and finance and really looking at what was not in the forecast previously and what we needed to have in the forecast that we can accurately represent what is likely to occur in our district in the next five years. We added a lot of things in there to further carry out the plans that were already set into place and promised, but that the actual expenditures for those were not accurately represented in previous forecasts. For instance, we have now in here, we know that there's gonna be a large jump in, in enrollment in, from people moving along from one building to the next. So in the May forecast of fourteen, there was one additional staff to hire in fifteen, and originally we had six additional staff that we were gonna need to hire in sixteen. And we figured once we had those, we kind of saw the numbers after a couple year push, then we were kind of back down to normal. So we didn't have, feel the need to put anything in additional, we figured we can move things around, and once we had that six additional FTE and the numbers kind of slowed down. So that was obviously an increase to the forecast, from the previous forecast, because we just added seven new FTEs to that forecast. In addition, the raises and stuff are all in here now. In addition, we kind of looked back and said, okay, the health insurance. They had a six and a half percent increase for one year alone that was figured in the, in the previous forecast. So when that number came in, it was actually nine and a half percent increase versus the six and a half that was projected. So I said, well, I think it would not be super responsible to put nothing in there for the future because clearly, after talking to the EPC, we had the second largest amount of claims than any of the other districts out of seventy-one districts that are in our EPC. So I didn't feel that it was responsible for me to suggest to the board to not have anything in there in the future for, for health insurance increases. So therefore, there was a range of about seven to eight percent. We had some higher and some lower, and the reason for that is, is one year, it's based off on our own individual claims alone. And then, then every other year, it's based off of all of the EPC districts as a whole. And generally in those years, our clay, our claims kind of get filtered out through everybody else in the EPC, and therefore we are able to benefit from the fact that other people may have less claims than we do, so therefore the, the percentage increases is usually lower. So it wasn't a straight, straight, you know, ten percent or whatever, we had higher and lowers in there, but at least it was projected that we were gonna know we had, we would have increases at some point in the rest of the forecast. So that was an addition. Then we can kind of come down here, we see in the previous forecast, I could probably show you, in the October forecast, purchase service was flatlined throughout the whole entire forecast. Purchase service is a very volatile.
Well, that's one of the areas, all of our special ed comes out of, at one point, all of our preschool, which is a special ed program, came out of. That's one of the biggest areas. Tara, while you're looking at, I would like to say, please understand, there is no disrespect in this. These plans that were built in the beginning with the former board, they were, they were accurate. We're living these plans today and they worked. That eleven hundred computers, perfect. So the plans were outstanding, and that's something we did in combination. So for me to stand here and say, the plans were not good or not, no, the plans were very good, and they were children's first. But to say that the new direction of this board, there is no new direction, we're carrying out the plans that's been here for three years. The only difference with this board, this superintendent, this treasurer, is that we do believe in supporting staff. And a moment ago, and Mr. Ogano, I apologize that I interrupted you while you were speaking, but our top step is, the average is what, two point seven four or three four, three percent?
Some are higher and some are lower, the average of all of our steps is about three percent for our steps. So the two percent that we were stating was actually the actual increase. We said step and two percent, which was accurate.
So to, to be clear, all of our teachers do not get steps. And I'm not gonna say just teachers, because I believe when salaries are withheld and you add them in at the last minute and then say you need eleven, you place a target on the very people that stand in front of our kids every day, and it's not fair to them. But the bottom line is, there needs to be an explanation. There is a step system, and if the teachers get a two percent increase and they're on a step year, perhaps they could hit six percent, is that correct? But that is not something they get every year.
Oh, no.
And beyond fifteen years or twenty years, there's only one or two steps.
Yeah, they go every few years between steps.
So it's not every staff member is getting a six percent, and that is what I meant. But to say, we, we might have a staff member get a six percent raise with step and an increase, could be. Very likely could be. So, right now, even with the, the, well, I can say this, right now, with the contract we have in place, the only school district that we will be ahead of in getting paid is Carlisle. But Carlisle's insurance plan is much more lucrative than ours. We've lost teachers to them. Outside of that, there is no Warren County school that makes less than our teachers do. Base salary start, is that an accurate statement? That is the facts that we have today. In Springbrough, we have over fifty percent of our parents with college educations. Almost ninety percent of our, over ninety percent of our kids are slated to go to college. We are the eighth wealthiest community in the city of, in the state of Ohio. Our parents demand the best, and they want their kids to be prepared for college so that they too can be as successful as their parents. In order for us to do that, we need the best people in front of our kids each and every day. We need people we can trust, we need intelligent people, and we need to have a salary and benefits package that's gonna retain these people so that they don't run to other districts to make upwards ten or fifteen thousand dollars more. So over the past three years, six years, the former board to this board, there has been salary increases given to our teachers, which is this year, we're only losing eleven people. And I think eight of them are to retirements. My first year here, thirty percent of the staff left based on retirements. Either they weren't happy or they left, we had some people go to Lakota, Madeira, places of that nature, ten to fifteen thousand dollars more. So all we're trying to do is be competitive. We haven't done anything outlandish with technology. Every single one of our kids are not carrying around a computer each and every day. They bring their own, and we have eleven hundred, and it was an outstanding plan. Our data is increasing, our high school's increasing, and we're offering things that are gonna make our kids college and career red. We're investing the taxpayers' money. So the plans that were created three years ago, in short, we have just carried those out. Unfortunately, truly funding those to what they actually cost is running us to a negative deficit in the year two thousand eighteen.
Nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen. That's why the superintendent, not the treasurer.
Well, so technically, so technically, as of right now with what we have, to, to, to make a comment that we are basically going to, by approving this, write a check that will bounce, isn't correct, because the, the period of this contract goes through eighteen, and we still have a positive cash balance as of now in eighteen. And it's possible, depending on what happens with the state budget, if it ends up being more, you know, promising like it's looking, then we'll be, you know, look even better. If the pipeline money comes through and we end up still getting it, I have taken it out of the forecast for another year now, so that could help if we are, end up, you know, being able to still get that for next year. So there are some things that can work for us as well, as there's obviously things that can work against us. So it's, you know, it, it's, it's a volatile thing, there's never, we can never take a forecast and take it to the bank. A forecast changes, it's fluid, it's not a budget, that's the thing. And so a forecast is not a budget, a forecast is supposed to be trends and plans that will most likely occur now and in the future. Plans change, things change, when we get new kids in, kids leave. There's so many things that happen that we can't, we can't hold ourselves to that number, that's why it changes. I just feel that if we can present everything to detail that we know as of today and make sure that's in the forecast, and I feel that we've done our due diligence to try to be as accurate as possible and, and have everything in there. Without spending too much more time, I mean, just, just some of the changes from May from October. Our insurance, our purchase service increased a half a million dollars in fourteen, they're increasing again this year. In the October forecast, it had the same number, exact same number in every year of the forecast. So that's utilities, that's all of our purchase service contracts, our ESC contracts, you know, contracts. Unfortunately for, you know, things that do change every year and as people come in and we have to provide services for them. To think that that number would never change even a dollar isn't, isn't correct. I mean, that's not gonna happen. So there is increases now, inflationary increases now slight, but that are in the forecast projected, assuming that our purchase service will continue to increase. So that did cost some extra money because, I mean, most of the things that are paid for out of there, we don't have any say so over. I, I, you know, we have to pay our utilities, we have to pay our contracts for our services. Same thing with, one of the things that, that's kind of hard for people to, to, to see and, and realize until you see it on paper is that some of these plans were put into place, but the items hadn't been actually purchased yet. So when you look at the forecast and we talk about, well, in thirteen and twelve, we had all of these plans in place and we gave money for this, 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 and this, and we still had a very large cash balance and everything was great. But when you actually start diving into the data, you can see that in those exact years, none of the things that had been set into place had actually been purchased yet. So, they, they started to be purchased in fourteen, the textbooks, the technology, all of the, the computers and all of the things that were set in these, these plans that were approved in thirteen hadn't actually started to be purchased yet until fourteen. So then all of a sudden, you know, I come here and I mean, I'm new and I'm not really sure what's going on, and then I find, well, your spending's out of control and, you know, we have to, you know, our trajectory and all of these things, but I, and I look through and I'm saying, these are things were already pre-approved, I don't understand. So that's where I think it's hard for people to understand, is just because the plans were approved in thirteen, they weren't spent in thirteen. They were spent in fourteen and they're being spent now, and they'll be spent next year because it, it's a process. And we have a lot of, you know, our textbooks, we haven't approved near the adoptions that they've planned. So each year you have to extend that year to a later year because the, you know, the purchases haven't all been made yet. So those are some things that you just kind of have to think about when, when you look at what plans were approved, that doesn't, they weren't spent yet. So they are being spent now, which makes it look like our spending is, is going up, but it's just because we're carrying out those plans.
Well, and, and the thing is, is for example, with band, athletics, staffing, things not in there, and, and the board then approved things as we brought those. Even though they weren't in that budget, our spending was increasing, but when you only went year by year, it showed a large cash balance, which created the understanding we had money to reduce. So six point five million dollars was reduced out of that over five years. So when that happened, that was a drastic hit, that's one point three million a year for our teach, our staff, all staff, not just teachers. Administrators, staff, custodians, bus drivers, maintenance workers, education. Administrators, staff, custodians, bus drivers, maintenance workers, educational aides, special ed teachers, for all of these people to get an increase, it's about, with stepped, about a million dollars a year.
It's about 1.25 million dollars a year with benefits.
With benefits. The benefits were another $300,000. So that 1.3 that was taken away was almost the exact amount of what it is for salary benefits increase for the teachers. So there's no surprise to me today that we're here with the new five-year forecast that is showing the need for a levy in 2018 or 2019.
Well, the money has to come in in '18.
Money has to come in, well, 2018. It's no surprise to me, when we supported staff and the money was taken away, you're going to have a problem. It was right there. Plus, on the other end, one would think our spending would increase, but what's not captured here, and we could talk about it all night, is my staff and I and our teachers, we saved over $4 million and our classroom sizes right now are in great shape. They're still high at the junior high and they're higher than they've ever been at the high school, but our high school has more kids in it than it's ever had. And our teachers are dealing with that and they're still making progress. So we're doing a whole lot more with less and we saved money in the process of it. For me, when I took this position, it is about making sure that when I go out and look at someone who's retired on a fixed income, when I look them in the eye to be able to say to them, we need that money. But I am clear about, I do believe in supporting staff, because a lot of people who are retired today had great teachers in front of their kids and they want that. So the assumption is something I think we have to look at and that might be a dividing piece. But the bottom line is, we have good teachers, we have reasonable classroom sizes, we have what our kids need right now, we have good buses and healthy buildings. We're doing what's right for kids. Unfortunately, it's showing that we're going to need a levy.
From what we know now, I mean, from what we know now, I mean, if something good happens with the pipeline and the state budget and stuff, then we can have another conversation, but... So basically, I'll just show you before we go and vote on this contract. This is the, I worked on this all morning and I got through where we're at right now with these raises, but I think it's important to also see what is, what's changed. We have rolled back some of the textbook adoptions. I know they're looking at alternate ways to provide those poor students. So we rolled that back a little bit. We have rightsized with the whole Clear Creek move, been able to reduce teachers, but it's through retirements, so, you know, through attrition, so we didn't have to lay, I don't believe anybody off, but as far as teaching staff. But so, so what you're going to notice in here is that it didn't really change that much, because what we were able to do is actually save enough money to almost pay for what you're about to approve, without really making anything change. The only thing that's really changed in this is the fact that I had to push the pipeline back a year, which is a million bucks. And that's within about a half a million for over a four-year period of what we're off from the previous forecast before approving the salary and benefits package. So if you look, you can see that in the blue is the November forecast that did not have these increases and did not have the HSA, which is another piece too that's important to remember. That was a concession. So with that concession, it helped us save money, which also helped us afford these salary increases with the concession. That's going to save about a million dollars in healthcare for us over the next four years. So the November balance, you can see the blue bar, then the current balance with negotiations and the pipe and the pub, which is the public utility. So you can see the blue and the orange are almost identical. That is where we're at right now. Now, obviously, you can see the gray and that's if the pipeline goes away altogether. So obviously, that would not be good, but that's not the impression that we're going to get out of this. I mean, there is 13 counties that this is affecting. So there is going to be a lot of people that are going to be trying to get something passed and I would be very shocked if they completely ignore all of us altogether, because that's a lot of taxing entities within those 13 counties as well. So I feel like it's more along the lines of the blue and the orange, you can see. So pretty much, it didn't really change much. And that's because of all of these reductions and things with the rightsizing and the textbook adoptions and with the, we can't forget with the energy project, how many things we were able to pull out before from the capital needs plan and it pays for itself through the energy savings. So that was another huge thing that we've done within the last, you know, six months or so to try to help, you know, stretch our resources and try to think of everything we could. So... And then also, we did a refunding at the end of last year, which in the last year of that refunding, which is in a few years from now, I'll have to look exactly the date, but that saved, it will save the taxpayers about $400,000 in that last payment, that last debt payment. We won't have to collect that amount. So that would be great for the taxpayers as well. And so you can see the forecast right now, it's really, looks really small.
They're all...
They're not small on purpose. You can see that in '18, which is the last year of this contract that we are, that we are asking to be approved, we have 1.7 million. So you can see between '17 and '18, '17 is our benchmark, which is our average monthly expenditures. So whenever you go under your average monthly expenditures, that's when you know that that's your target, that you need more money. Or, so having everything in the forecast that we know today is so important, because we can start to try to make decisions now, you know, to, so that we know where we're going to be. So if you don't have everything in there, it could be a surprise. So then you can obviously see in '19, with the renewal levy, we still are projecting to be negative 1.3 million. So any way you look at it, if we would have obviously had that six and a half million, we'd have about five million, so we'd still be good in 2019 and we'd be good in 2020.
We'd be way ahead of the...
So, you know, it is what it is, but this is where we're at today. And you guys have a copy and I will go ahead and be posting this, because I will, you know, bring it back for a work session and approval so that we can go ahead and make this the new forecast, because the one that was submitted to the state had to be done by May 31st, so it's already up at the state level that didn't have the raises in it, because we hadn't settled a contract yet.
Thank you. Does anybody have any question?
Well, I have, I have a number of comments about that. And I guess, let me just start off by saying, as I started off originally, I heard an awful lot of demonization in there and effectively, if we only cared more about teachers, we'd agree with you, Mr. Petrie. I would prefer to have rational conversations about this, about balancing priorities and so forth. And so, and I knew it was going to go there. But let me talk about some other things. A lot of incorrect presumptions in that presentation, and I'm not going to go through all those. But you came in January of 2014, right, Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And you prepared the May 2014 forecast, you said that, and you also prepared the May 2014 actuals, didn't you?
The May 2000, I mean, I've done everything since January.
Right, and you would stand by those 2014 actuals?
With the numbers that we, with the information that we had at the time.
And so, I would just point to the forecast. Actual expenditures of this board in 2014, after y'all arrived and you prepared the forecast, $44.6 million. The 2015 expenditures, $47.8 million, a $3.2 million jump after you prepared the forecast. So all this stuff about what happened in 2013, I don't agree that it was wrong, but you fixed all that in May. The May actual is $44.6 million.
Nope.
And the budget now...
You're incorrect with what you're saying, Mr. Regano.
The actual expense, your forecast is wrong?
My forecast is not wrong. What you're stating is wrong. I clearly...
That the actual expenditures weren't 44.6...
I'm not saying they were 44. I was less than one-tenth of 1% off when I presented the last forecast from what I had presented as to what ended up happening.
We're $1,000 off on a $60 million budget.
I'm not...
What business does that?
I'm not saying that you aren't accurate. I'm saying you are accurate. I believe that we actually spent $44.6 million.
Right, but that's because I told you, though, that all of those plans that had been into place had to be paid for.
We paid for it, I got that, I heard that, okay? We spent $44.6 million. The year before, we spent $42.4. We had to do those plans. You fixed a bunch of issues that you thought were with the forecast. We didn't do this, we didn't do that. You put that in, in May, in 2014. In 2014, we spent $44.6 million. We're in 2015 now and we're slated to spend $47.8 million, okay? That's a $3.2 million jump in one year. That's my point.
Because we've been teaching and staff.
Let me move on to another point. Let me move on to another point. You, you spent a lot of time, well, you said there might be a person who got 6% raise, 6% raise and 7% raise under this new contract. I would suggest to you, and what I said, and I did just ask that when we issued press releases, that we just be clear to the public, that's my only request here. I'm not casting a judgment as whether 6% is too much or too little or whatever. I said that, and I believe this to be true, since most of our employees are relatively new, that most certified employees' actual salary increases will be closer to 6%, 6% and 7%. Our press release said the raises were going to be 2%, 2%, 3%. I just think that that is not factual and misleading.
It did say stepping.
So, no, it didn't. I read it. The, I would just ask that we settle that issue by publishing, as I asked before, that we just publish the before and after salaries and then we don't have to argue about that. It'll be what it is.
We will see they're lower than anyone in Warren County. And Springbrough people's taxes...
Yeah, I am not, I am not casting judgment about whether it's too much or too little. I just want us to be accurate when we report to the community.
But we're $3 million on it, because we paid staff. If we wouldn't have reduced six and a half million, we would not be where we're at. If we would have been saying we were going to compensate the people who stand in front of our children, we would not come up short and we would have not have given the money back that this community trusted the board to spend properly.
Well, no, I'm not, no. Well, they went on for 30 minutes plus.
They're the staff. I asked them to...
I'm a board member, Mr. Anderson.
You're one board member.
And they came here and they made all kinds of accusations and...
After you did, after you did, let's be fair.
On 20...
Let's be fair.
I went through two minutes or less than that, one minute or points.
What do you want to read? What do you, what do you want to say? Just say it and be done with it, so we can move on with this meeting. It's a business meeting. This isn't just a forum that everybody can just...
Well, you gave the floor here for an extended presentation.
I gave them the floor because that was business of the school district.
For an extended presentation. Well, this is business of the school district.
No, it's not. It's you going off on a rant. It is. This was business that the community has a right to hear.
Well, they have a right to hear my opinion on this too, okay?
And be succinct and just make your point and let's move on.
Certainly, certainly. I'll just say this about the $1.3 million. You've already got 1 million of it. The revenue last year went up a million. I understand you wish you had another 1.3, but it went up 1 million, it's going to go up another million. By next year, you'll have 2 million additional and...
No, we are going to call for a vote, because you are misleading the public. When you say you already got a million, that's not factually true, Mr. Regano.
Read the forecast.
We got a million dollars, but we, it didn't come from that 1.3.
No, it didn't.
Okay, thank you. Then you're saying that too.
I'm calling the question.
You can't just call the question, Dr. Malone.
I just did.
You can't, you don't get the right to just call the question and stop the debate.
Mr. Regano, if you have a final point, then make it.
I understand that, I understand that you guys don't agree, but the fact is this. The budget is out of control. If you're going to manage a budget in a school district, you have to be willing to negotiate and not capitulate. And that's what's happened here. If you're going to spend more money on staff, which, the board has a prerogative to do that, right? If you think we weren't spending enough on staff, that's fine. But if you're going to manage the budget, you have to cut back somewhere else. And that's clearly not happening, because the spending here went from $44 billion and it's on its way to 51 in record time. There's not any management going on.
No, I disagree with that, but we'll...
We can vote now.
Roll call.
Regano?
No.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to item 3.2, approval of the contract agreement. Springbrough Community City Schools and Springbrough Classified Employees Association. Roll call. Or motion, I'm sorry.
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Discuss. Roll call.
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. So we'll move on to the treasurer's report.
Yes, I'm sorry. These are, we're approving, asking for approval of the, hey, it should be the May, I apologize. It's the May 2015 financial statements. If you go through and look, you know, if you've had a chance to, everything is right online with what is forecast and our expenditures are right online with what we projected this month in May. Our revenue was slightly lower, but that's because our rollback at Homestead didn't come in. It came in May 30th of last year, so it should probably be coming in within the next week or so from the county auditor and then that's why I show an increase in June, which will then offset the fact that we had a lower revenue in May. Other than that, everything is right on with what I had presented to the board in the May forecast.
Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 4.2, approval of fiscal 2015 final appropriation resolution and fiscal year 2016 temporary appropriation resolution.
Does have to be filed with the county auditor by June 30th.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 4.3, approval of payment of invoices, transfers, investments in funds and appropriation adjustments for fiscal year 2016.
So this is for the upcoming year, just so that I can allow the payroll to go out, I can allow our council people to pay the invoices, do purchase orders, all of that kind of stuff. So it was on last year at the same time and it goes on each year.
Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Motion passes and we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Yes, these are second reading policies. Policy 2413, 5350, 8390, 8400, 5111.01 and 5112.
Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, anybody? Roll call.
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, asking for approval of the revised code of conduct that will guide our preschool through 12th grade next year. It was presented to you as is at our last board meeting.
Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Well, I think there's a problem. The code of conduct is actually a policy and I don't have any disagreements with the work that was done. It is in a policy, so I don't know how we can adopt this when we have a policy that says something different. I think this really needs to get written into that policy and then brought to the policy process.
Our attorneys advised us that the code of conduct definitely needs to be approved by the board. We can go through the channels you'd like, however, one of the reasons we're asking you tonight is we need to put this in all of our handbooks that get printed and our parents sign off on those, that they understand it as to our students. So it's not something we can wait two or three months to get taken care of. We need this approved so we can guide what we do next year.
Well, I guess, I mean, as long as you understand that the policy is the official document and this is, I'll say, an interim document that describes the...
No, this is just support, this is a supporting, carrying out the code of conduct. Probably could be a guideline at what it's worth, but nonetheless, it is something that needs to be approved by the board.
Roll call.
Regano?
Reggano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 5.3.
It's approval of donation of $1,872 from Springbrough Athletic Boosters for boys golf uniforms. Wow, it's nice, man. Thank you to our athletic boosters.
Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Reggano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The 5.4 is the approval of the revised school calendar. We've discussed this, however, within that contract, that was just approved. We used to have late starts, now we are going to have early release, and also, we will have two teacher in-service days. This year, we had four, so we're reducing those, and it aligns with the quarters at the high schools starting the school year first, but we will be starting four days earlier next year.
Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Reggano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to director of human re, uh, resources.
Uh, this evening, 6.1 is to approve to employ contracted services for human resources.
Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Reggano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 6.2.
6.2, for the superintendent, we are asking approval for 393 positions. Some of these are accepting resignations, some of them are for extended days that we give for various student efforts. We also are looking at approval for Title I, as we're doing a summer school this year for them, and as you will see, we have many classified substitutes for the 2015-16 school year, and finally, we have to employ athletic temporary help through the season for next year.
Okay, great. Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Reggano?
Yes.
Malone?
I've abstained.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Anderson, uh, my wife was on, was affected by this motion, so I did not...
And we'll move on to item 7.1.
Yes. Um, 7.1, we request the approval of the novels that we have presented that have been through the process of evaluation. So, we request the approval of those novels.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Reggano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 8.1, business manager.
Mr. President, members of the board, for your consideration, approval of a nonroutine use of the district school buses to shuttle participants from the Springbrough bicentennial celebration during the July 3rd through 5th activities at North Park.
Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pursuant to our, our, our board policy, as well as, board policy 8651, as well as administrative code 3301, 83-16, it allows for this type of activity to occur. It also recommend, well, it also says that the board shall be compensated for whatever costs are associated with such of an endeavor. The committee, one of the committee members contacted the transportation supervisor, Mrs. Horover, asking to do that, and I know there's been some other conversations that have gone on since then, and apparently, what they want to do is they want to allow some parking up at this area, at our high school and junior high lots, and then have a shuttle bus to go from here down to North Park, and then one from the airport where there will be parking to North Park. And it's mainly Friday night and Saturday for the activities, not on Sunday. There's still activities, but they don't believe they'll need the buses for those.
Okay. Roll call.
Reggano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, members of the board, our annual request to renew our property liability of fleet insurance with Liberty Mutual.
Okay, is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
We were, we were anticipating a, a larger increase this year. The, the last, the 14-15 school year, we actually had zero claims this year with the insurance, so the increase is less than 1%.
That's good.
Yes.
Roll call.
Reggano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, board member, uh, reports, comments, or questions? Mr. Stuckey, I want to start with you, since you're the one.
Okay, I feel like student, right?
Yeah.
Um, just a couple things. The plans that you went over and so forth, and that you guys implemented, or were going to implement, were all great, okay? When we came on the board, if not having the funds, if that was what it was set aside for those things, of course, we're going to, you know, pass those and spend the money to add everything. Athletics, they can't exist by being self-sufficient. I think there's one program in southwest Ohio, Oak Hills Navy, that does that. You know, they're getting better at fundraising and so forth, but once again, that's the kids, you know, and then you go to the parents, you know, they're having to help with the funding and so forth.
A lot.
You know, our community is just, you know, overwhelmed with a lot of fundraising that goes on. Our teams do very well, but it's unrealistic to expect that, that we don't pay for the salaries and the buses and stuff like that, you know? Maybe we can condense it and make it smaller as we go forward, you know, so hopefully, that'll be a thing. I, I know there's been a lot of finger pointing that, that Mr. Petrie and Ms. Floyd and the three of us are, you know, not watching the spending. Well, implementing everything that you went over in your discussion there, on the board is cost money, and, you know, we're just trying to do and implement what you feel is best for the kids in the district. You know, without that situation, without being able to do that, we're not going to be able to achieve our goals as a district. I'm not saying we don't need to roll in and rein in the, the spending as much as we can, and I think you guys have done a good job making cuts with our administrative staff, central office staff, and, you know, I applaud that and encourage you to keep trying to do that, which I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Reggano?
Yeah, well, I, I, I agree with you, Mr. Stuckey, those were good plans. I think still are good plans, and I also understand that when a new board comes in, priorities shift. But when the priorities shift and the spending shifts, if you don't manage that change, then you're not managing the budget, and I, that's what I think has happened here, is that those were great plans, but you had your priorities and you want to spend money on those, so we're spending money on both, and there's not really been the effort to curtail spending in one area so that we can spend in the other area. And I guess that's my, that, that's my issue, is that. Now, I guess I would like to say this to, to our teachers. I, I admire what you've accomplished here. You've, the board had set some goals for negotiations, and you moved us two or three years off of our mark there, and you've gotten a, a very good contract that I guess Ms. Floyd says we can barely afford. I was under the impression that it was not as affordable as that, but at any rate, I think you, I think you've gotten a, a very good bargain.
Mr. President, our teachers didn't move anyone off of the mark. They did nothing wrong here.
The, uh... Board comments, Mr. Petrie.
The, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that in an accusatory way. I'm, I guess I'm saying in a congratulatory way. I'm not, I'm not chastising law. I think, I think they've done exactly what they set out to do. The, I would just refer the community, you know, we heard a lot about what happened in 2013, and, and, you know, I, I don't agree with those comments. I would just refer folks to look at the current five-year forecast, and what you'll see is the revenue on a nice upward glide path of about a million dollars a year, and you're going to see those expenses jump, as, as I said, if they were, and, and when you, when you don't have the revenue to support your expenses, you're going to be on the ballot, and that's exactly where we're headed.
Well, first thing I'm going to say is it's not a sin to be on the ballot, and I think that that's a picture that's been painted for years, is that at all costs, avoid going to the people, and that's not fair. And, so that is a mischaracterization, you know, it's been a threat for years. If we don't do this, we have to go to the ballot. Well, as I said, that is part of the educational funding process. Switching gears, I, I certainly appreciate all the effort that everyone has made in terms of the contracts, the negotiation teams, both from the board and from the unions. If there's one goal that I had when I came on the board, it was to hopefully achieve a level of stability within our district, and I, I think that the key item, or a key item in terms of stability, is having a contract in place for both unions before they leave for the summer, so that in fact, they know what their working conditions are, they know what their salaries are going to be, and that speaks volumes, because everyone wants to know what their situation is, and I think that the fact that an agreement has been reached certainly speaks well to both parties, because you don't have an agreement unless both parties want that agreement. I personally am thrilled that we do have a settlement, a fair settlement before the next school year.
My only comments are on two things. One, I would, if you look back at what the previous board approved in their negotiation, which I believe was 2 and 2, and then we had our current health insurance situation, which, which needed to be fixed, and they also agreed to staffs. So, the previous board agreed to all those things.
We, we did.
The only difference, no, no, this is not rebuttal, this is, I let you talk, you let me talk. So, now, now we've agreed to three years, basically, I think by the time you throw in the HSA, and it's three instead of two, third year, I understand that, but I'm not sure it's any different than what the previous board agreed to with, with the staff. So, so that point, so we need to put it into, that all of a sudden, they negotiated just a huge deal this time. It, it was a win-win. I think they and the board decided that we need to get control of this healthcare cost situation, so we came up with an alternative, and both sides worked to agree to that, and then the other thing, this is, this is all great information. I wouldn't want anybody to think that tonight is the first time we've seen this, because this is, we've seen this for months and months and months, so it's not new to any board member up here, or Mr. Petroni, who unfortunately is not here. So, it's been out there, it was, but it is always nice to refresh and to go back, and it's always helpful to know where you're going to go, once you understand where you've been, and so, so I think we had a good, we had a good conversation. Sometimes it gets a little heated, a little emotional, and, but I don't know of any board member, board meetings that, that don't, so I think it was a good exercise, and everybody feeling like they had their...
Just, just one point there, Mr. Anderson. We, we had a similar contract. The difference was, we had, we had the funds to support that contract, and that's not the case today.
No.
We gave back 6.45... Absolutely, we had, we had that, we had that much money.
And we're not ready to pay for other things. Not if you didn't have anything for staff.
So, anyway, so board member comments, Jim. You, you're, you're very good at, at, you're a master at manipulating...
Manipulating, I'm, no, I'm not manipulating anything. I'm, I am just referring people to the five-year forecast that was published last week, Mr. Anderson.
I try to make a...
Go look at that, and you'll see the revenue, you'll see the expenses.
A realistic point, it doesn't, it's not challenging you or, or pointing fingers at you, and yet you...
Well, you said manipulating. I'm not manipulating anything, I'm informing people.
Well, that's what you, that's what you have in your mind, then that's fine. So, any public announcements?
Mr. Anderson, that was rather rude.
Being known, future considerations, anything?
Uh, graduation is Saturday night, 6 o'clock, the notice center, 2015 graduates. I can only imagine the kids are excited, their parents are probably torn a little bit. It's a big step, a chapter in their life, and hopefully, all take a moment to think of them, and they move on to a happy, successful life, and find passion in what they do, so they can truly enjoy their life.
Yep. And Mr. Anderson? Is all there at 5:30, I think?
Um, yeah, we're usually there around 5:00, with the notice center traffic, you never know, so.
Okay.
Yeah. I forgot your cap and gown, so we will deliver those tomorrow.
Why don't you just bring them?
Well, they need iron and everything.
Tom, are you doing that?
I'm walking around.
Okay, well, why don't we take a five-minute break for work session?
One, one more future topic. In consideration, Mr. Petroni, we have a moratorium on rescheduling regular meetings.
Yes, we will do our best not to reschedule.
And I, I really do think that it's a legal issue, because when we put, there's a difference between a regular meeting and a special meeting, and there's rules for special meetings, and so when we publish that schedule at the beginning of the year, those are the regular meetings. If we need a special meeting, fine, let's go ahead and schedule it. If we don't need a regular meeting, then let's cancel it, but if we can schedule, if, you know, and you look through that history of cancellations and reschedules, what you'll see is that we cancel a regular meeting, and then very in, in close proximity, we had a special meeting. Well, why don't we put that special meeting on the same date that the regular meeting was, if we don't need the regular meeting? I think that that would help him a lot, and, and then, you know, all these meetings are scheduled well in advance, I think we need to do everything we can to work around the regular schedule.
Okay. Hey, let's go, let's take a five-minute break. Okay, so let's get started back in work sessions. So, is that what, item twelve point two, school fees?
You know, if I could make one quick announcement I forgot to do.
Oh.
On future, for this announcement, we have four high school students who will be competing in the track event tomorrow. It's the state championships, correct?
Yeah.
It's Keaton Case, Howley Willenbrick, Kaylee Cook, and Samantha Ballmerch. So they're competing in the state track, four-by-hundred team. And let's give them our best wishes. And also, we will have our last MVP meeting for our visiting process on June tenth. That is six o'clock or six-thirty?
Six-thirty at the high school.
Six-thirty, at the high school. So we'd love to have all the young ones join that with us.
That's on June tenth?
June tenth, at the high school.
So, anything about fees?
Yes. The fees are as presented. Tara talked about this, Ms. Floyd, at our last meeting. We never collect enough money to fully pay for all the consumable needs the kids have, so some of these come out of the general fund. That's why they were moved to the general fund. But when parents do pay their school fees this year, they will go to things such as art supplies, workbook books, assignment books, consumable novels, paper, or miscellaneous instructional items. School fees will no longer pay for progress book, a tech fee, or a recorder for these. General fund pays for all of those, which will determine last year. So we'll be bringing those for approval, so that we can get those out to the parents as soon as possible at the next meeting, July seventh meeting.
Item eight.
Twelve point three, how many?
Question, twelve point three.
Pay to participate fees, this is for high school, junior high sports band, and junior high color guard. They are gonna remain the same price. We're not increasing those. And the family cap, of course, is a thousand dollars, a thousand forty dollars per year. Now, if the board so chooses to increase those by all means, let's have that discussion. But what I wanted to recommend to you is that we keep those the same. Which does mean we will have to transfer three hundred, at least three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars out of our general fund into the three hundred fund. And keep in mind, you know, in the last four years, our teams have won, and our varsity football team has won big. And they bring in, between band and varsity football on Friday nights, they bring in a hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's very helpful in offsetting that cost, because we are about seventy percent self-funding. If we were to have a losing season, we might come back and eat four hundred five thousand. But nonetheless, our kids work hard, and they play hard, and they come out very successfully, which saves a lot of money coming out of the general fund at the end of the year. So we would like to present those at the same cost for another year, unless you'd like to.
Those comparable to other schools?
Uh, they are. They are. Now, some districts don't have them at all, most do right now. These were reduced a lot, which we talked about. Over the past couple of years, they have been reduced. At one point, they were probably, or double that. Maybe not triple, but double. And there is a family cap, that's a thousand forty dollars per, per school year. So, and we also will still have the district service program to where students can work off ten hours per sport, per seat, to reduce those costs if they so choose.
So, Mr. Pinnell?
Mr. President, members of the board, just wanted to bring this to work session so that there's not a surprise later on. We are required to transport to all the private schools, as well as charter schools, and that within a thirty-mile drive of our school district. So, one of the things, though, that, that we have a choice of, if the ridership is low to those schools, we can declare transportation in lieu of, declare it impractical, and pay transportation in lieu of. That the, the state then reimburses us, and we pay that out to the, the parents. The parents of those schools then have the option to accept the in lieu of transportation, or they can reject it, and we go through a, a process of going through mediation, or even into court, depending on what happens. This year, we had two families from John the Twenty-third reject the transportation in lieu of. And there was, there was quite a bit of, of pieces to that that aren't common. One of the things that we do, we normally take that action in the October timeframe, because by the time the, the schools get us their information of who's actually enrolled in the schools, we get that information usually in September. We bring it to you all, you all approve it. Because in the action you take, you actually have to have the name of the student, the location of the school, their grade level. Those things have to be in your board action. And then we send a letter to all the parents that says, transportation has been declared impractical to your school, and then you, they're given a certain amount of time to return that letter, so that then they can be paid at the end of the school year, because that's when we get paid from the state for, at the end. Because if for some reason they move, or whatever, then it's a prorated amount for the amount of days that they were there. And the state sets that proration day, that, that, that dollar amount for the in lieu of. When John the Twenty-third parents, when they rejected their in lieu of, they also had some, some folks that were at Bishop Fenwick High School, as well as Middletown Christian School, join in to the, to the hearing that we had. There was a hearing that we held with the area coordinator Larry Grooms back during our spring break. And out of that came several things. Number one, the, the state is recommending that we take the action earlier. I'm not sure how we do that if we don't have their names, but we'll have to look into that. Number two, we need to shrink down the amount of time that we allowed. We allowed the parents to respond as late as April in order to get the payment, and they recommend us giving them a thirty-to-sixty-day restriction to let us know if they're gonna accept payment or not. And they requested that we survey the parents to see how many will be willing to ride. And, you know, it's an arbitrary figure in terms of what counts impractical, what doesn't. Typically, if you have less than ten riders that ride a bus to a school, that's usually what I've used in the last eighteen years of being a business manager, is being a fairly good dictator, because if not, you got buses out there with no kids on them. Or else you have buses that are transporting to the schools that are out there for an hour and a half, neither of which are, are acceptable. So, so based on, on the meeting that we had, it was agreed to that we do some research, we, we'd send out that survey to the parents. And then when we got that back, then we would tell them before we were out of school, which is tomorrow, whether, what our intentions were for the fall. John the Twenty-third has fourteen students that will ride buses. Bishop Fenwick High School has seven. So between those two schools, that's twenty-one riders, which is enough to justify transportation. Now, the, and John the Twenty-third has about twenty-two students right now there, so the majority of theirs will ride. Bishop Fenwick has seventy-three students, so if those seven students, if we provide transportation there, the other sixty-seven, or sixty-six students will not be eligible for the payment in lieu of transportation. They will lose that next year, because we will be providing transportation. Middletown Christian only had one student that said they might ride occasionally. So at this point in time, what I am going to recommend to you all is that we provide transportation to Bishop Fenwick and John the Twenty-third, not do the in lieu of. But that means that we will have two additional routes that we don't have now, which is not just the route itself, but you're talking about needing two buses, morning and two buses in the evening, or trying to figure out a way to do that. One of the problems that we have, because our transportation is so efficient, there aren't a whole lot of extra seats or our time on our current buses. So more than likely, it's gonna generate at least a halftime route for two drivers that we don't, don't have, currently have on the road. So we're looking at probably costing the district somewhere around fifty to sixty thousand dollars in additional costs that we didn't incur this year. Because the in lieu of costs that we paid out, were given, were paid to us from the state, we just then paid that out. So it was a flow-through. It didn't, we didn't save any money, it didn't cost us any money. But when we do this, it will end up costing us money. So that's why we're, it's here, it's a long history. When the parents reject the in lieu of, we are required by law to provide transportation to them from the time that they reject it. So we've been transporting those two sets of students to John the Twenty-third since they rejected it officially in April. There was some communications back and forth, but we'd never got the official rejection letter until right before spring break. And at that point in time, we put them on buses, and we're providing transportation for those four students. Does anybody have any questions?
Just trying to understand, are, is the same bus going to, is it stopping at Fenwick and then going to John?
That's what will happen. Our intent is to route all twenty-one of those students, twenty-two of those students, on probably two buses, because those, those twenty-two students go, come all the way from just at the Waynesville border, all the way up to right near Five Points. So to have one bus pick up all twenty students, it's about a, almost a two-hour route. So there's no physical way to get them onto one bus. If we can, what we're hoping to try to do is try to partner up with, with maybe Lebanon and/or Franklin to try to shorten some of those. One of the, one of the John the Twenty-third parents, they wanna be able to drop their student off at Bishop Fenwick, and we'll pick up there and drive them from Bishop Fenwick to John the Twenty-third, which that saves us a route, because he's one that's a little bit farther out than some of the others. So those are the things that we'll have to work out, and hopefully we'll be able to share some of this, so it won't be quite as much of a hit. But it could be upwards of the fifty or sixty thousand dollar range to hit to the general fund. And that's why we're trying to work that out.
Any public participation regarding work session? Nope. Discussion of other business, any other business? That, we're gonna move, we have, entertain a motion for executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment patterns, requires to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
Is there a motion? So moved. Fair second?
Sir? Can I get longer?
That's a mouth, that's a mouthful.
Are, are we gonna be discussing all of those different topics?
Yes.
I thought we were done.
Roll call?
Vergano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.